It is now six thirty. We're gonna call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk, the Madam City Clerk, to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Torres?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney? Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Here.
All members are present at this time except for Councilmember Kearney.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilwoman Shirley Cuevas will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a word of inspiration by Pastor Matthew Harbison from Lawndale Western Church.
Please stand, right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
I'd like to say thank you for having me again. I was the last one when you closed over there, and I guess I'm the last one here before you go back. So I'm looking forward to visiting the new facilities. I hear that things are good, so let us commence in prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to be present today in this building, Plan B. But we thank you that the council chambers have been worked up and fixed and modernized so that next time we can go over there and enjoy back in chambers. But while we're here, regardless whether it's this building or the one across the street, we ask that we would conduct ourselves civilly. We ask that we would continue to treat one another with respect. We would listen to one another. And that we would be able to be guided by your hand as we are able to continue to demonstrate democracy as well as brotherly love in this city that we love and which we cherish. For we are all neighbors, first and foremost. We ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor for those words of inspiration. Thank everyone for being here tonight. Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our captain. Nicole Palomino will give us public safety report. Welcome, Captain.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for June 4th through June 17th. So some of our notable arrests and investigations. On June 6th, at approximately 5:50 PM, Deputy Rodriguez located a vehicle whose registered owner was wanted in connection with a domestic violence that occurred in the city of Lawndale. Deputy Rodriguez conducted a felony high-risk traffic stop and located a firearm inside the vehicle. The suspect was arrested for domestic violence and weapons-related violations and booked at South Los Angeles Station. Then on June 3rd, at approximately 1:10 PM, deputies responded to the 4,400 block of Redondo Beach Boulevard regarding reports of a person shooting a firearm. Deputies learned the suspect discharged a firearm in the shopping center plaza and fled the location. A neighboring police agency located the suspect a short distance away from where the crime occurred and discovered two firearms in his possession. Nobody was injured during the incident, and the suspect was arrested for robbery and various weapons-related violations. He was not a resident of Lawndale. And then regarding our traffic-related incidents, approximately fifty-five citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle violations such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. And then several speeding citations were also issued on Hawthorne Boulevard and Prairie Avenue. And just so everyone knows, the next Neighborhood Watch meeting is scheduled for June 18th tomorrow at 7:00 PM in this room at the Harold Hoffman Community Center. Everyone from the community is invited and encouraged to attend. And lastly, the next Coffee with the Cop event will be held on Wednesday, June 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the CNS Garden Center located at 4167 Marine Avenue in Lawndale. Everyone in the community is also invited to attend this event. And this concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Okay, thank you, Captain, for the report. Any questions of the Capitol's public safety? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Murphy, if you could tell me if it's okay if I ask her? Because residents are asking what is going to happen with our fireworks suppression on the 3rd and 4th. Can she give us, or should I be asking Michael when it's time?
Ms. Ray, this would be the best person to speak about it.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, then I'm fine.
Okay, thank you, Captain. Okay, moving on agenda. It is now time for oral communications. Oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items not on the agenda, we ask that you, you don't have to line up today, but just come to the podium when it becomes your turn after the person that preceded you has left the podium. Please start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on. Well, actually, the city clerk will give you the signal that the amber light is on. Right? And that'll give you the signal, start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. Just simply come to the podium when it becomes your turn. Any wishing to speak on the oral communications? That'd be, yes, sir. Let's see this gentleman first. See, was able to raise his hand first. I always take ladies first. Go ahead, ladies first, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You don't have to be really quick, long as, long as it's more than three minutes.
On my way here, so he was just saying that on Inglewood Avenue, by the Billy Mitchell Playground on that side, a tree is like forty-five, at a forty-five-degree angle, and he was wondering if the city could go out and take care of that tree, that's all.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so this was a few months ago, but I have some office fronts on Hawthorne Boulevard, and they were broken into. The people, they cut through the roof, and they stole $33,000 of cash from that office. They busted a hole into the next office and stole their safe. And then they cut the locks to get out the front door and put it in their silver or gray Nissan Altima car, and they drove away. So I was out of town, but when I got back, the tenants had already fixed the hole and the wall and stuff. And so I said, you know, I needed a report, police report, you know, for my insurance to pay them for that. And so she called. I had, I couldn't get one because my name wasn't on the report, you know, even though I said, you know, I was, I needed it for my insurance. So I had the tenant have, had to go down and get a report and pay $25 extra, whatever. And so she asked them if they were going to send an officer out or inspector to take fingerprints, and they said no. And she asked why, and their reply was, because it wasn't a crime. And so I'm just wondering what, I told them I'd come down and try to find out what, what kind of stuff is going on here. If, you know, maybe we're all in the wrong business, I guess. So do you, I just...
Give us your name, please, if you don't know.
I'm Jeff Dunne.
Jeff Dunne, okay.
D-U-T-T-O-N.
Okay, thank you. What we'll do, we'll offer some comments after everyone had a chance to speak.
Oh, okay.
Then we'll offer some comments. Yes, sir, we'll offer some comments there.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to this body on the oral communications? Okay, with that being the case, can we have some address the gentleman's concern? Is that what's going on over here?
Yes, the mayor already took care of that.
Okay, taken care of. Okay, and we're gonna take a look at the trees.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council will definitely take a look at the tree. I know I mentioned to Ahmad that I did notice that tree a couple of weeks ago, so I don't know where it's at in the process, but we'll definitely follow up with Stephanie.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, thank you, thank you for my question.
I think you just did it all.
Okay, move right along. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, we appreciate it. Next thing on the agenda is the consent calendar. There's item one through six on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this board concerning such?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, the motion is made by Madam Protem Torres and seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent calendar? Seeing none, would the council, would the city clerk please conduct the vote?
Yes, before I do, just really quick for the record, Councilmember Kearney will be absent tonight.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Just wanted to skip this, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Abstain.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes with three yes, and Councilmember Cuevas abstained.
Thank you, madam. Next item, item seven, is a public hearing. Consideration of ordinance to amend the Lawndale Municipal Code regarding density bonus standards for affordable residential units.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jared Chavez with the Community Development Department. Tonight's item is a consideration of ordinance 1207-24 to amend the Lawndale Municipal Code regarding the density bonus ordinance. We're requesting that per state law, AB 1287, which was, which became effective January 1st, 2024, we update the density bonus law. This new density bonus law will be adding a new, a couple of new scales to what we already have. So the current scales would be stacked on top of this new scale. So if they would require, if we had 100 units and they wanted to do 15%, which gives them up to 50% density bonus, they can, they can do that per what we already have. And then these, these couple of new scales that the state is proposing would add to that density bonus. So if somebody wanted to do 100 units with the base scale, 15%, which adds up to 50% of density bonus units, then would add proposed 15% more. It gives them another 50%, essentially giving them 100% density bonus. So this is just an additional scale that's been added by the state. It's a little bit confusing, but whatever it is that they're requesting now, they can also request a density bonus in this other scale. So to add to, to density bonuses to equal up to 100% density bonus. So staff is requesting that we amend the code per the new state regulation, 1207-24, which is a new ordinance, and to have it exempt for SEQA per 15061 of the SEQA guidelines, introduce the first reading of the ordinance and amending the Lawndale Municipal Code regarding density bonus laws reflecting the new changes in state law. Staff is available for any questions, because I know this one's a little bit confusing.
Mayor and council, if I may. Staff prepared the ordinance, our office reviewed it. It is consistent with state law, it is consistent with what every other city is adding as well. The reason that you see separate standards for very low income and for moderate income on this is because the, the primary pot of money from a state level is for low income, not very low, not moderate. So this is a means by which the state is trying to incentivize developers to build and restrict units at both the very low and the moderate income level by providing for an additional density bonus. There is not, unfortunately, a whole heck of a lot of discretion here, and as I say, everyone else is doing, at some point this spring and summer, what you're being asked to do tonight. That's the legal of it, and with the director, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Mine is just, so if we approve it tonight, how long does it take again? Is it 30 days?
So it actually became effective January 1st of this year. We're just updating our code to be consistent with state law.
So as of this year, they could already apply?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor, council, I just want to add one other thing before we move forward. Not too many developers that I've talked to, they are not as excited about some of these changes only because when they apply for the density bonus, they have to restrict the unit rent income. So a lot of them tell us, Jared and I meet with them constantly. We even ask them if they want the set aside, if they're interested in it. Many of them have told us they're not interested in that because prevailing wage requirements, but also they have to indeed restrict the units below market rate. So a lot of them tell us they're not interested in some of these density bonus requirements. So I don't want you to think the floodgates are gonna open and folks are gonna come running through the door asking for these because they're very restrictive, and they're restrictive on the units for a lifetime of the project. That's it.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. It is now six forty-five, and we declare the public hearing open. Are there any wishing to provide any testimony or comments for this public hearing? You may do so at this time. Seeing none, it is six forty-five. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed and bring it up to the council for any comments on this item.
I just had, sorry, I had another question based off of, you said for the lifetime of the project. So can you just, like, go a little more?
So long as the project, Mayor and council, as long as the project is in effect and same as what was approved originally by the council or commission, then they have to maintain those, the easements on those, those restrictive uses on the property. So if it's reduced rent, they're required to hold that down for the many years that's on the covenant. Usually it's 30 to 40 years sometimes. I've seen lifetime on them, but it just depends on what covenants we record against the property.
So you said 30 to 40 years, but this one would be for as long as the structure's standing?
Right, because if we give them, if we, for example, let's say they want a, we had a project of 41 units, they wanted tandem parking. So the developer was concerned with the restrictive use. He wanted, he was looking at maybe potentially going back and changing that. But the problem is the development was already built, and he already had tandem parking, it was impossible. So whatever the concessions are, they would have to mitigate those if they want to undo those things. And sometimes it's impossible, especially if you get reduced parking. Of course, you know, things change, people can find areas that, you know, do joint parking. But typically, it's really difficult, especially if you get a density bonus for the density and number of units, how are you gonna reduce the number of units? So they're already built. Usually typically, they don't tear those out. Typically.
I'm still not totally clear. So is it, I know you said the covenant could be 30 years, 40 years, or what have you. In this case, does that mean in perpetuity? Because you assume that unless they tear the building down, the building's gonna be there in perpetuity.
Yes.
So that means forever, forever?
Ever and ever.
Not 30 or 40 years?
It could, depends on what we put in there. Depends if there's some performance standards on those that they have to meet, but typically, it's a lifetime of the project.
And then does that also mean if that project is standing for 10 years and is sold, the new owner would also have to continue?
Yes, it runs with the land.
It runs with the land, alright.
And transfers. I haven't made it's a legal side of things, but assignments and parties that buy it, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's recorded in the chain of title. It's, and under the density bonus law itself, it's a minimum of 30 years.
That's right.
Oftentimes, and the reason the city manager was saying you'll see longer is if there are financial incentives by the city beyond the density bonus law, then the city would restrict for longer. If there are tax credit allocations or other pots of state money, you tend to see either a 35-year restriction or a 55-year restriction based on the legislation that created the program. So really, you're looking at minimum 30. And again, because, like I said earlier, mostly they're using low income because that's where the pots of money are that help to offset the developer not getting the same return on the units on a year-by-year basis. So that would be, instead of the 30, that would be either 35 or 55, depending on which type of state assistance was used. And so we don't really have control over that other than to look at it and make sure that our conditions match that funding.
But it will lapse at some point, because if you say 35 to 55, the lifespan of a building is probably 100 years or so, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So really, at the time that the restrictions are running out, the property owner is going to have to be putting substantial work into the building anyway to renovate it for its next generation, or else if it's not well-built, tear it down and build a new one at that point. Yes, sir.
And just I wanted to add that the city does look at the agreements between the low-income units and, and the renters. So we have to actually review everything, so we have a constant look at what's going on.
And can you go over, help me to follow the, I wasn't able to follow too closely the math again, so I won't pretend like I understood it. Because I did, but then I kind of felt off a little bit. So if you say it's 100%, just allow it to get up to 100% density.
Right.
Give me another example, so I can follow it.
So there's, there's two scales. There's the existing scale now, which gives you up to 50% density bonus. So they can, they can use that, they can provide whatever it is, low income, moderate income, et cetera, which will determine how much density they're gonna get. And then from there, then they can look at the second scale, which is this new one where we're adding. And they can pick a number. I'm gonna provide five, maybe 15% density bonus on top of what I already provided, and then they get an additional percentage of, of units. So you can go all the way up to 100. Not necessarily 100, but you, there's a chance that they can do that.
So if you went all the way up to 100, and say you built 100 units, not we're standing the land, you know, if the land can stand it or what have you, you know, but you build 100 units and you go all the way to 100, does that mean 200 units?
Yes.
Okay.
With concessions that they can ask for. But like, like City Manager Moore said, most developers don't want to actually go for this because they're not actually profitable. So we haven't really, we offer it, but they don't go for it, so. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this, this item? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council concerning this public hearing?
A motion to approve.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion been made that we, that we approve the staff recommendation by Cuevas and seconded by Torres. And there's actually like a couple of motions in here. Couple of things you'd like to do in this motion. So the motion will cover all?
Let's do.
Three of them?
Let's, yeah, all three.
Determined, yeah, all three, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, would the city clerk, please conduct the vote on this item?
Okay, Mayor Protem Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes, I have a question, a city attorney, Greg. Should you read this?
As soon as you finish voting, I'm gonna read it.
Then you're gonna read, okay.
Yes, sir.
I thought you did it before. Okay, yes, ma'am. Sorry for the interruption.
Motion passes with unanimous agreement.
Mr. Mayor, the council just introduced for first reading ordinance number 1207-24 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lawndale, California, adding section 17.50.045 to chapter 17.50 of Title 17 of the Lawndale Municipal Code regarding density bonus standards for affordable residential units in order to reflect recent changes in state law. Pursuant to item one on the agenda tonight, having read the ordinance by title only, we will, you have waived further reading. This matter will come back to you at your next council meeting for the second reading and approval at that time. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item number eight is approval of the Municipal Law Enforcement Service Agreement.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. The staff report you have before you is for the approval of the Municipal Law Enforcement Services Agreement with the County of Los Angeles for Public Services. Every five years, a contract is brought before the City Council for review and approval. The city has engaged with county departments to provide complex services, including law enforcement. There are some minor changes to the contract language, but overall, the contract remains largely the same, and service levels will remain the same for the past five years that we've already had. Staff recommends we approve this contract, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any discussions on this report?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Says a subcommittee from California Contract Cities, consisting of city managers collaborating with the county and the Sheriff's Department to negotiate and revise. How does one, does anyone know how one gets on that committee for city managers? So, you know, just for the future ones, I'd like to see if we could get our city manager to sit on that subcommittee.
I mean, Mayor, council, we can look into that and ask them. I noticed, I know Temple City was on, the city manager was on that. I mean, I can ask Greg to ask him how he got on it.
Yes, Mayor Protem, I believe, and I don't know for sure, I will ask. I believe that the people who were, kind of, who started that process were city managers on the Oversight Trust Fund, which, which obviously Councilmember Kearney also sits on, or I'm sorry, the Liability Trust Fund, it's called, that, my fault. The Liability Trust Fund, because the, the primary issue was not, as the director said, the issue was not with the contract itself, but the primary issue in dispute or in negotiation is the working of the Liability Trust Fund. And so those members who had been on that wanted to engage in some negotiations. They began doing so. I know that it expanded beyond that. Contract Cities obviously was involved. But in terms of five years from now, you make a really good point that if more robust negotiations are necessary, then it should be, you know, city managers from across the area, not, not just the ones who are involved in that trust fund. So I'll make a note of that and take that to the working group. Thank you very much.
And perhaps too, I know we have our, I think, or actually, I think our Councilmember Kearney is the delegate, and Councilmember Hoffman Gorman is the alternate, right? So possibly they may have more information too. I was just curious about that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this item? What is the pleasure of this body concerning item eight?
A motion to approve recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned by Cuevas that we approve the staff recommendation concerning of item eight and seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the city clerk conduct the vote?
Mayor Protem Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes with unanimous agreement.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, agreement, agreement for CDBG Administration Assistants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an agreement for CDBG Administration. The agreement was, it expires on June 30th of 2024. It is for, to administer the federal monies that we receive from HUD. And, from HUD, who is the, then, is, it's actually sent to LACTA and sent over to the city to administer. So with this money, we use it for street improvements and for the senior lunches. The contract will be ending on June 30th of 2024. And on May 9th, 2024, the Community Development Department put out an RFP, and we only received one response, which was Michael Baker. And in this case, we're requesting that we do a total of a three-year, I'm sorry, a five-year agreement with, so it would be one year with four one-year extensions. And staff is requesting that City Council approve the Professional Services Agreement with Michael Baker International, as requested by the RFP, to administer the CDBG Administration and Labor Compliance Services. For the fiscal impact, we're gonna be using CDBG money, and the cost that is being proposed is $57,000 for the, the administrative professional services by the Michael Baker International. And that, that concludes staff report.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions of the report?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
The amount of $57,000 is for the entire time of the contract, or just one year?
That's gonna be for one year of the contract. So each year, we're going to amend it. And, and then we're going to do the amendment and request another extension.
Do we know if that amount's gonna increase?
It should actually be consistent throughout the contract for, for the extensions.
Okay. So that's 57,000, probably 57,000 times four, because it's gonna be renewed four times?
Um, let me, let me check just to make sure that is. I believe it's actually for, for the whole contract in my, just one second. Check right here in my, put it in the chart, but. No, it's for 2024, 2025. It's, it's going to be per year, yes. No, it's for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. It's, it's going to be per year, yes.
Okay, so basically, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, basically?
Yes, that's correct.
For the duration, okay, approximate, okay.
And, um, just to, just to let you know, that's gonna be, get, you get, we are gonna get the money from the CDBG funds to pay for the contract services. So it's not gonna come from the general fund.
Do we get those funds ahead of time, or do we have to request those funds?
It's a reimbursement.
Reimbursed.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions concerning this item? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item nine?
A motion that we approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been, motion been made that we approve the staff recommendation concerning the agreement by Suarez and seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Madam City Clerk, will you conduct the vote on item nine?
Mayor Proton Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quavis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul and Miles?
Yes.
Item number nine, motion passed, citizen senate.
Thank you. Item number ten, professional service agreement extension with De novo planning group.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, the community development department has been working on the general plan, Hawthorne Plan and Zoning Updates, uh, since twenty twenty. We did adopt the general plan update, uh, back in, at the end of twenty twenty-three. And now we have to put together the zoning and the Hawthorne Plan to be consistent with the general plan. So staff is working, uh, very hard on this, but there's been some changes to state law that are required to be looked at very closely, which is why we're a- asking for an additional year extension on this contract so that we make sure that everything's looked at closely and there aren't any uses that may not be consistent with our general plan and that might not be, um, good uses for the city. So we're, we're asking for a little bit more time, which is a, a total of twelve months, ending in June of twen- thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Um, per, for the fiscal impact in this specific item, uh, it's not changing. We're still using the same amount of money that was initially agreed upon, which we have about forty-nine thousand dollars left. It's just that we wanna take a little bit longer time to go through every single use because it is very detailed, so, um, which is, that's the reason. It's the zoning code and the Hawthorne Plan that we have to look at. Uh, staff recommends that city council approve the, the extension for the professional services agreement with De novo uh, in order for us to be able to, uh, update our zoning code and our Hawthorne Plan to be consistent with our general plan. Do you have any questions? I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions on this item?
Hi, good.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
The amount left that we have, the credit, is forty-nine thousand. Do you see if they have to extend a little bit more time, that amount increasing, or are they estimating that by June of next year, they'll?
So I did speak to the, to the consultant, and we agreed that that's gonna be all, like, the, the amount, the total amount that they're gonna charge us, they're not gonna overcharge, uh, from the forty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars.
And completion should be no later than June thirtieth of next.
Because right now, we already have the drafts for the zoning and the Hawthorne Plan. We just need the time to go over it and make sure that everything's looked at closely.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? All right, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item ten?
A motion to approve the extension.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned by Quavis that we approve the staff recommendation concerning the extension and seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quavis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul and Miles?
Yes.
Item number ten, motion passed, citizen senate.
Thank you. Item eleven, approved contract service agreement with Fourleaf Inc.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, this item is a request, uh, for the community development department to, um, go into a contract with Fourleaf in order for us to be able to, um, hire a community development technician. Um, currently, we have a technician, and he, he's being provided to us by the LA County Department of Building and Safety. Um, unfortunately, uh, they had to provide us somebody that they contracted out with, which is Fourleaf, because they don't have staff to, they don't even have staff for themselves, so they had to hire somebody for us to be able to con- con- contract with. Um, we did speak to LA County, and they had nobody available, and they're actually, um, terminated, terminating their contract with Fourleaf, which means that we would be left without a, a technician, a, um, community development technician. So, uh, community development is requesting that we go into contract with Fourleaf to be able to keep our current, um, community development technician and, uh, continue the services as, as they've been, been doing as of right now. So, uh, we're requesting that. Um, the funding is going to be provided with building and safety fees, as it's already been. Um, and they're actually gonna charge us a little bit less, uh, amount of what we're being charged by LA County. So we're gonna be doing a little bit of, paying a little bit less, so it's gonna be sixty, sixty-three dollars per hour versus, I believe it was above, above seventy before what the LA County was charging us for his services. So we're going to be using building and safety permit and plan check fees to cover his, uh, his position. And staff is recommending that you approve the contract services with Fourleaf and to provide, to provide the technician services from July first of twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And to approve the budget reallocation, uh, from the building and safety services to, to the contract services in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And that is, uh, that concludes staff report. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Okay, thank you for that, um, report. Any, any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you for the extra, uh, one of my questions was how compared to the county and their hourly charge. Um, but I'm just curious, if they're short a technician, but they don't wanna continue contracting with Greenleaf, is it because they, um, I guess I'm just curious, 'cause we've historically always gone with the county. Um, and I know we've, I've asked if we could ever contract out with a different entity just to see if the processing times were a bit quicker, is, are they just downsizing and they're not, um?
Um, there was, there was litigation that was going on between Fourleaf and, and LA County, um, which is why they, they stopped their, the contract. And we did require, I mean, requested somebody from, from LA County specifically, but they don't even have enough or any available, um, technicians to provide to us.
Mayor Council, I can answer a little bit of background. Um, we lost our last technician. He left, he got promoted. County didn't have anyone to fulfill that position. I actually called my contacts around, and they actually helped us out for Leaf, brought in the current technician we've had for a year. And then something, as Jared alluded to, something behind the scenes happened with their contract with LA County, and they're no longer using Fourleaf. And so that kinda, again, kinda left us in the, in the lurch a little bit. We didn't wanna be in the lurch 'cause, uh, we just trained a staff member up for a year, getting used to all the clients that come in and our customers and learning our system. So, um, and it's, and he definitely knows LA County's system, 'cause we're still using that. This will not affect the plan check. This is counter services only. So, uh, the person that works, they just provide customer service, process permits. The plan check's a separate issue that's handled by LA County.
And do we potentially, are we able to see how they work out and whether we want it? Or I don't know if we're legally allowed, but can, in the future, expand to use this company if it works out better?
They, they actually do provide that type of services. The last time the city went out and looked at those services, they were a lot more expensive. Typically, I'll, I'll give you an example. When Mister Wilson was here, Chris Wilson, we looked at, we had RFPs out, and a lot of these firms want fifty percent of our building permit fees, or they want, there's a percentage they, they, they charge, or they charge, uh, per hour rate, it's a little more expensive. Right now, the deal we get with the county is great, because it's leveraging the large county system with all the plan checkers they have available. Yes, they're overwhelmed, but we've gotten our plan checks back in the line, and we're turning things around in ten days. Try to get them planned checked in ten days, a little less if we can. Um, but, uh, compared to, comparatively, yes, they could be a little faster, the private side, uh, but they're more expensive too. So, and the way we balance the community development department, we offset currently, what Jared didn't mention, was the building and safety department does not cost the city a dollar directly out of the general fund. That, that, the building safety department is run entirely off building and safety fees. Planning, for the most part, is, except for one position. So the way it operates, it covers our costs, so our costs are low from the county, and then our revenues that we bring in cover the cost and staff. And luckily, we've been able to, uh, we have enough, uh, revenues to pay for the, the cost of this technician.
Yeah, the only reason why I ask is 'cause sometimes, uh, time-wise can cost you more than if you're paying the fee. That's the only reason why I don't know if it would be an option if they're somewhat comparable, because, you know, if you're waiting on a repair to finish and you have to go to a hotel, sometimes you might say, well, you know what, I'd rather pay a fee that'll get it expedited than have to pay other, you know, unforeseen costs. That's the only reason why I ask.
And that's a good, uh, and the county does provide those expedition fees. They actually contract with all other, uh, they have other outside firms they use. Uh, developers can pay extra, but a lot of times, the cost, some of, at least the ones that have told us, they're not interested in, uh, paying the extra plan check, expedited plan check with the private sector firms that LA County has under their, their, under their, under their, their authority.
Okay, well, I'm curious to see how this plays out, so, um, I appreciate the question, or the answers.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm gonna go back to money-wise. I, I know we're using other funds, but the one thirty, the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, is it yearly? Or does it increase next year? Is there a percentage increase?
Uh, this is for the, this was, what was adopted in the budget for the specific position for contract services. I, I mean, for building and safety, for his position. So we took that amount, um, and this was looked at with finance. We took that amount, and we're gonna move it to contract services, which is where we put in, um, when we contract with a different, uh, consulting firm.
And their contract, is it increasing yearly? Or is it a flat rate from twenty-four through twenty-seven?
So the, the contract is from, from now to twenty-seven.
And it'll be a fixed amount, or?
That is, that is what was agreed upon, yes.
Very good. Any additional, uh, comments, uh, questions? Okay, thank you for that presentation. Appreciate that. Uh, what is the, um, pleasure of this body concerning this item? There's two recommendations here.
A motion to both recommendation to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, and most have been made by Quavis that we adopt the recommendation of the, of the, the staff recommendations, the two recommendations enumerated here, and, um, seconded by Madam Pro Tem Suarez. Any discussion on the motions? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quavis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul and Miles?
Yes.
Item number eleven, motion passed, citizen senate.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve, notice of completion for one forty-seventh Street Crosswalks.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, pleasure to be here. Uh, the item before you, item twelve, uh, has to do with notice of completion. Um, you know, it feels like I was just before the city council requesting a word of construction on this one. Uh, as you recall, on May sixth, uh, council awarded the, uh, construction contract to Superior Paving Marking Incorporated uh, for thirty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, uh, dollars for the, uh, crosswalk painting on one forty-seventh between Hawthorne and Prairie. And as you recall, there was traffic safety concerns of the community in that, uh, section. So, uh, construction began, um, on May thirtieth, completed in June third, very quickly. Good contractor. Um, we inspected in-house. Um, there was, uh, a little over five thousand dollars in contingencies that the council approved on May sixth. Uh, so during the course of construction, we noticed that there were some existing, uh, crosswalks that needed to be touched up a little bit, so everything is brand-new now and looks great. And so the purpose of this, uh, staff report is to request the city council to accept the project, um, completed by Superior Paving Markings, paving markings, authorize the city clerk office to file the notice of completion, and also authorize the staff to release the five percent retention, which is one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Um, this project is a very small portion of the overall striping city by it. So by no means we're done with everything yet, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. I mean, any questions on this item? Seeing none, thank you for that, uh, report. What is the, um, for any discussion, any discussion?
I'm just excited that it's been completed, so I'll make the motion.
Absolutely.
I'll second it, and thank you for getting it done as quickly as you did. I know you had a big part of that, so I want you to know how much I appreciate that.
It started and ended with you.
So the motion's been made by, by Suarez, and seconded by Hoffman Gorman, that we, uh, accept the staff recommendation. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quavis?
Yes.
Council, or Mayor Paul and Miles?
Yes.
For item number twelve, motion passed, citizen senate.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your good work. Appreciate it. Okay, item thirteen, you standing there, you standing there?
This is you again.
Item thirteen, adopt resolution, number CCC, I mean, you know, some other digits, um, pertaining to the budget list of project road repair and accountability act.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, it's a, it's a lengthy staff report, but don't be scared with all the, all the words. Um, it's a, it's a simple, basically, reporting of the maintenance of effort, you know? That has to do with the Senate Bill One. Um, I, I'm sure that, uh, council has the background. Uh, this was signed by the government back in two thousand and seventeen, uh, for the Road Repair and Accountability Act. And, uh, and so there is a whole array of requirements by all California cities to report to the CTC with, um, with, um, the description of the project, uh, the list of the streets, the estimates, you know, and what have you. And then, um, CTC contacts state controller. State controller determines the apportionment, the allocation of the funds for each city. And then the tricky part is, uh, the maintenance of effort, MOE, which every California city is required to spend. You know, they don't want our money, but they want us to spend the general fund as maintenance of effort on, on our streets. So in a nutshell, the city of Longdale fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five and probable future allocation is estimated to be eight hundred and twenty-three thousand and some change. That's on your staff report's second page. And then the revenues from SB one or RMRA is five hundred and thirty thousand. Based on the recent years, the MOE on the general fund is two hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars for the city of Longdale. So if you add those two up, you know, it's roughly under the apportionment or the allocation, which is eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Bottom line, we are, um, nominating or reporting on three segments of the road. Uh, it is in your resolution as well as a map at the end of the staff report. It is, um, one forty-fifth street from Hawthorne to Large, one fifty-fourth street from Hawthorne to Large, and then a shorter section of one forty-fifth street from Abus to Prairie. Uh, these streets have been selected based on the PCI and the PMP. As you recall, last year, Bucknam reported on all of that. And so this has to be done through a revolu-, uh, revolution, resolution, uh, by the city council. And the, uh, recommendation is to adopt the attached resolution, uh, CC twenty-four oh six dash zero eight three, approving the project list, um, as attached in the exhibit A as presented. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Um, any questions? On this report? Okay, what is the, um, or any discussion? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
A motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, Quavis has moved that we approve staff's recommendation of the re- resolution and seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Paul and Miles?
Yes.
For item number thirteen, motion passed with the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, mhm. Next item on the agenda is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to defer some of my time to Mr. Reyes to come to the podium and try to answer, uh, Hoffman Gorman's question. Councilmember Hoffman Gorman's question, please. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, council, uh, Mrs. Mayor and city council. Thank you, uh, for this opportunity to speak to you again. Um, so we are working hard on, on planning the, uh, the enforcement for the, um, the fireworks, illegal fireworks suppression detail. Um, th- every year that we've done the program, we've evolved, so we've learned new things from the previous years. Um, we already have the signs out advertising the enforcement. Uh, you've probably seen them up and down the boulevard. We also run it on the city's website and on our, the cable channel. Um, this year, we are only gonna have law enforcement only. There won't be any city staff involved. Um, and we won't be doing the undercover vehicles. We're gonna have police in full black and white, uh, cruisers. So, um, I'm not sure how many we've already signed on deputy wise. I know we wanted to get as many as possible. I know Sean said forty. I think it was jokingly forty, but, uh, I mean, we can try to get that many if we can. Um, it's, it's, it is a holiday, so it is some difficult to get the deputies to sign on to it. It's a little easier to get the third filled than the fourth. But, um, but we are working hard to get extra overtime deputies to air, to, uh, enforce for us.
When you find out how many deputies we're going to have, can you please alert us?
Yes, I can tell Sean and then, yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll keep recruiting up until the day of. So, I mean, people might sign up that day. If they've discovered they're not doing anything with their family, they might just pick up shifts, so.
Now, do we have a trailer that's moving around also that?
We have the, we put in the open request to have the, uh, Public Works put out the radar trailers and also put the banner up now that pet fair's over. Um, we just need them to be available. I know they're working pretty hard doing other stuff too, so as soon as they get it out, well, it'll be, yeah, we, we we plan to put the radar trailers out, the message board trailers out, uh, the banner across Hawthorne, Hawthorne Boulevard still needs to go up. Um, and beyond that, that's, that's the full messaging we do.
I would like to see that happen as soon as possible. I did get one complaint, just so you know, on the, um, intersection signs that we have, they're too busy. People are having a hard time. In fact, one woman called me and said, I nearly got in a wreck trying to figure out what in the world that sign was because I had seen it two or three times. But it's, it's pretty, but it's hard to read. It's, it's not very clear and so if we-
We can, we can have more made up before the holiday.
If we get to a point of having to redo signs, even though they're pretty and good looking, um, I think we better go to something more plain.
More simple, sure.
So it's easier to read, yeah.
We can do that. And actually, we, we strategically try to put them at intersections so that people would be stopped so they could read them. But again, it's sort of just, you know, wherever we can get them is where we put them. But yeah, that's, that's a good suggestion. We can certainly make them, uh, shorter and, and more readable to drivers. Yeah, no, it's a good suggestion, so. And, uh, yeah, that's, any other fireworks questions?
Um, are we also watching social media for our sellers?
Um, staff is not, but we can. Uh, that was one of the things we did in, in year two of the, of the plan. We actually uh, intended to ticket people for selling and then we put up ads to see if people would try to sell to us. But, uh, social media actually, it's an, is an illegal thing to offer, so we were getting kicked off of the social media sites.
I know that my kids, I know that my kids showed me on a website that I couldn't tell, or an app.
Yeah.
How they could see it, uh, but I'm not tech savvy to know that. Um, so my thought is, is whatever we can do to enter that world.
Yeah.
So that we know what's going on. And again, I, it's not just about stopping them from being shut off. It's also if we've got residents in here selling them, boy, howdy's.
Yeah, of course. And, and, and in truth, uh, one another thing that we do every year is the people who got cited the year before, they're put on a list and every year the deputies are given that list, so they, and nobody who's gotten cited before has done it again.
Are we knocking on their door and reminding them, hey, don't do it this year?
We're not doing that, but we can.
Well, no, we used to have, we used to have the sheriff's department, remember our lieutenant that used to go door to door? And remind them, hey, listen, it's coming up.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can speak to Sarge about that. I, I, I-
Do you remember that?
I do, I do, and I don't think it's a bad idea. I, I, I don't know how, how, uh, people receive it though when we go.
Well, it's just a reminder to even the neighbors around on, hey, don't do this.
Well, the, for us.
We've been at this long enough to have somebody come up here and it's going to happen come this fall. They're gonna come up here and say, well, I didn't know. And we're doing the best that we can to tell them, don't do this, so.
Uh, when, in, in year two or year three, we actually put letters to the entire residents and we also sent letters to all property owners that didn't live in the city, so that nobody would have an excuse. Uh, that was a fairly costly mailing though. I think it was around nine thousand, eleven thousand dollars just for that, which was about a third of the total budget. So that kind of limited us from having deputies, but that was something we've done in the past. And, and even that year, when every single person got a letter saying, don't do this, people, oh, I didn't, I didn't got to get the letter, so.
Well, I'm going to say again out loud for the public, um, where my son and daughter-in-law, or my daughter and son-in-law live. I am very proud of their property owner because he actually puts out a letter to his residents and says, if you are caught doing this, um, consider yourself gone. Uh, it, it's time for you to move on. Because he doesn't want that on his property and I appreciate that, that we have an owner that is willing to turn around and say to his residents, not here. Take it somewhere else. And I'd like to encourage other owners to do the same.
Yeah, and that's, that's very responsible. I, I applaud that honor too.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you Fred. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So, yeah, that's it. All right, um, we now had, um, item from the council members. Let's start with Ms. Cuevas.
Um.
How are you?
I'm very good. I just want to thank staff, um, all, in all departments, uh, for the, uh, health and safety fair featuring the pet fair. Um, it was a good event. I had great feedback from residents. Uh, the line to vaccinate their friendly family members, their fur babies, was very long, starting prior to opening the, the gates. So it was a, a great event. Thank you team for putting that together. Um, I also, I attended the Longdale Little League closing ceremony. Um, I wanna congratulate the, the Little League volunteers. They had a success, another si- strong season. And they, this year for fundraiser, they had a homerun derby, which was great. You know, it was a good way of getting the kids, um, involved again. Even though their season was over, they showed off how they could hit home runs and they raised, uh, a good amount for the league. Um, and that will be all for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman?
So I also attended the pet fair. It's a nice day and like Ms. Cuevas said, a lot of animals were vaccinated that day. Um, we hit a home run when it comes to that particular day. I think that we probably do more vaccine, vaccinations and licenses on that day than the rest of the year, but, um, I appreciated that about the pet fair segment. And I also heard someone say that, uh, the Lions Club was actually helping a resident get glasses and I was, I didn't realize that they actually hand out the glasses as well, so I was appreciative of, of knowing that. So good job to our staff on putting on another successful event there. I also attended, uh, the ribbon cutting ceremony for Rhonda's Medical Wigs, which was an exciting event. We have a new business here in Longdale that is taking care of people that have cancers or have alopecia or, or issues with, um, loss of hair. And me being in a medical background, what I was excited about and getting to know from the owner is that she is capable of running some of these charges for durable medical equipment through their insurance. And she's working even with Medi-Cal and Medicare to get those things covered. Absolutely outstanding and, and I welcome her to our community and I look forward to there being successes um, in that for our residents. I also attended, at my own hospital, had the governmental affairs had a, um, tour and a presentation at the Providence Little Company of Mary in Torrance, and I attended that. And I attended the, uh, Contract Cities Legislative Committee meeting, uh, which was as usual, interesting, uh, so what they opposed and what things they supported um, as far as writing letters to, uh, Sacramento on where we stand. I think one of the most exciting ones for me was AB two-four-eight-five that has to do with those all important RENA numbers and transparency. And the hope is that through this, um, uh, bill, that we will be able to not just see our own RENA mu- numbers, but also other cities because we always questioned, well, how come our RENA number is this and their RENA number is that? And there's supposed to be a clearer way now and be able to, so that we can search, how come this city has this number and we have that number? And so I'm excited about that one. Also, there's, um, another one that supported AB twenty-eight oh-seven about street takeovers. Again, changing some of the license or the, the language in it. It had a sunset date and they're just extending it to keep it out and, and moving. And a big one for Contract Cities is AB twenty-five fifty-seven. And it has to do with, um, oppose, it, it, it has to do with everything that Contract Cities is against. It is trying to change the way we hire, um, and contract for services within cities. So definitely, um, Contract Cities wrote a letter in opposition of that, uh, bill, so. That's it. I would like to say, coming up, like the captain said, we have tomorrow night, the Neighborhood Watch. I'll be here and I challenge all of you to invite three people. And, um, we also have the Coffee with the Cop event coming up and again, um, let's get out in support. It's, it's how we, we get information. We also have coming up this Saturday, the twenty-second, an Esmo Chalk event that looks kind of exciting. So come here to City Hall and enjoy that event as well. That's all I have.
Thank you for that report.
Was that an hour?
That was pretty robust, yeah.
[laughing]
We appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Oh, no problem. Not at all. Madam Pro Tim?
I attended the Pet Health and Safety Fair. Um, it was a great event, well attended. Um, I enjoy the addition of uh, the different kinds of pets and animals and creatures and critters every year, reptiles, um, some chickens, my favorite. [laughing] Um, and, and all of the pets that come out. It's very well attended and thank you to staff for putting that on, um, and thank you, Jason. I know it was your first one, but, um, it, it was great. Um, and then I also had the pleasure of attending the grand, was it reopening or opening of Rhonda's Medical? So I had a conversation. She's actually been open that business for three years. But I think she wanted to give, um, more light to it and very interesting about how she got started. I think she went back during the pandemic to school to get specialized, from what I understand. Um, and then really, this is a passion project and, and for me, uh, it wa- it hit very personal to home. You know, having lost my hair, I'm like, oh, that's a great, um, great asset to the community to have that as a, um, like a safe haven for someone who's going through that and needs, um, the expertise on that. So it, it, it hit close to home for me. Um, and I think that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. So I had the opportunity to meet, um, with the CEO of the, the Sprouts. As everyone may be aware and those who are not aware that, um, we are gonna be welcoming another new business in the city of Longdale very shortly. And that's a Sprouts Farmers Market. You no longer have to go to Redondo Beach for your, 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 your Sprouts on Farmers Markets, um, goods. You can do all your, your, um, shopping here in the city of Longdale. So I had the opportunity to meet with the, the CEO and his team. We just kinda chatted about, um, different things such as economic opportunities here in the city of Longdale. They're really excited, um, to be in the city of Longdale. You know, of course, you know, as you know, uh, they just don't just decide arbitrarily to come to a city. You know, they do the research, you know, and see what the market would bear and if it would, um, pencil out and if it's a good opportunity for them. And, um, everything seemed to match up and I believe that Longdale is gonna be a very good, um, good fit, uh, for them. So we're excited that, um, Sprouts will be opened up in the city of Longdale. We also have the opportunity to talk about community, um, involvement. Um, they are a good corporate, um, neighbor and therefore they're looking forward to being involved in the community. Um, not only, you know, providing, you know, fresh, um, um, goods, um, at their, um, store, but also just being involved in the community. Um, another thing we spoke about was local hire, something that is real important, um, to myself and of course to our community. Um, and he underscored the importance of, um, even himself. He brought, kinda brought this out and I just kinda, um, added on. Um, having local hires, so when you go in the stores, you kinda, you know, know, you know, some of the, um, some of the workers at the store and that, that gives it that neighborhood, you know, uh, feel. I shared with him the fact that, um, at twelve, I, um, worked at the neighborhood store and it was one store that served about two communities. And at twelve, and therefore I knew everyone in the community, because you have to come to the store at some point, right? And so I knew everyone in the community and to have local hire is really important, not only for the job opportunities, but building communities. And the CEO, he gets that, right? And so they're gonna be looking to do, um, um, some hiring. And so we're gonna do our best to put the word out, um, when Sprouts are hiring. Matter of fact, they're hiring now, so they should be able to give us the little advert, advertisements or what have you. Also told me about them, the South Bay One Stop as well. Um, a lot of people tend to go to the South Bay One Stop um, for, um, employment opportunities or what have you. So we wanted to plug them into that as well to make sure we have some local hires um, for the Sprouts. So we're gonna welcome them. I can't wait for that. The other thing I wanna mention is, um, of course, I also attended, um, Rhonda's Medical Wig. And I was excited, um, to see another smaller business here in the city of Longdale because we understand that small business is the heart of the community. Uh, really the heart of, of, of the United States. Because m- most businesses in the United States that employs are small, um, businesses. And so to have, um, Rhonda, um, wigs to remain in the city and to do a, a grand opening, a re-grand opening and ribbon cutting was, was pretty, uh, pretty special. We did get some coverage from Channel Seven, although I did not see the coverage myself, you know. It, it was due to air at eleven. Of course, that's late for me. Right, right, so, so I, I was pre- I was pretty much asleep by then. Nobody gonna go to sleep till about eleven, but I, that night I went to sleep early. Um, so if we did have a, I don't know if anyone saw the coverage or did we actually make the coverage? You know what, if we did, it would be great to, um, repost that, you know, on our site or what have you, um, if we, if we made, um, the coverage or what have you. But we're excited for, um, for Rhonda and, um, um, and her family and she, by the way, employs Longdale residents, um, as well. You know, so that, that was great. So congratulations to Rhonda, um, Hunt is her name and Rhonda's Wig. The location is one sixty-one eighty-five Prairie. So that's right on Prairie Avenue, close to Artesia. Um, for those who need that, um, type of, of, of service and we appreciate her, um, bringing her business to Longdale and remaining in the city and being part of the city. And that's all I have. With that, we only have one closed session tonight. And that's a closed session with conference with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two, uh, significant exposure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We will go into closed session at this time.
Um, I've been replied there. As Sprouts. I bet you it's.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Oh, you were. Did you get it?
Mm, I don't think so.
You don't think so? Why not? What do you go for? Okay, we have returned from closed session, but I asked the city attorney to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council was briefed on the one item of, uh, potential litigation, but no reportable action was taken. That is all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I wanna adjourn this meeting tonight, um, in memory of, um, Longdale resident Peter, um, Park. He was a resident at the South Bay Senior Co-op, um, um, building. He was born November twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-nine and he passed away-
He was born November twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-nine, and he passed away June first of two thousand twenty-four. Peter Park, a twenty-seven-year resident of Longdale, passed away on June first. He was eighty-five years of age. So, on behalf of the city of Longdale, we send our condolences to his family on their loss, and we will adjourn this meeting in his memory. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at six-thirty PM, Monday, July fifteenth, in the Longdale City Chambers, City Council Chambers, right?
You have to go home.
It is now seven fifty-four. And this meeting is adjourned. Just a spin.
It's like, you made it suspend for next month. So, it's now seventy-five.
Fifty-five.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so full.